Still waiting for approval, and it's been about two years since we started the process to get approval from National Grid. I'm a little bit frustrated with National Grid on that front, but I'll definitely be supporting this resolution because I know what it means for the community. But just wanted to share my sentiment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. We talked before the meeting, and I'll reach out to National Grid to see how I can kind of move that along.
I would just would, I appreciate Councilmember Anane sharing some, as much as we appreciate our power and having power, I think all of us have experienced frustrations with National Grid at some point. Any other questions? Thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Did we have anyone else that was coming in to speak on legislation? Not sure if Rick was. No, okay. Let's go through the agenda. So in local laws, we have from Councilmember Keegan, a local law amending Chapter forty-two of the city, of the code of the City of Albany by adding a new part, forty-three, creating the City of Albany Commission on Disabilities. That will go to Human Rights, Human Resources. Ordinances introduced, we don't have any other local laws today. The rest of the local laws are held. Ordinances introduced, we have from Councilmember Frederick, a bonding authorization for DGS Fuel Storage and Distribution System to increase the bond authorization. That will go to Finance. From Councilmember Flynn, an ordinance of the Code of City of Albany in relation to membership of the Examining Board of Plumbers. That will go to General Services. We also have an MC from Councilmember Robinson that was just discussed, Ordinance fifteen eighty-one twenty-five. And we will be passing that this evening. In ordinances held, we have ordinance, Item twenty-five, Ordinance four forty-one twenty-five. An ordinance authorizing an easement for five mil road. That, we will be voting on that tonight. Twenty-seven from Councilmember Johnson, Ordinance six sixty-one twenty-five. An ordinance authorizing the sale of Ash Grove Place. That also passed through the Finance Committee meeting, and that we will be voting on that this evening. Item number twenty-eight, Ordinance, from Councilmember Frederick, Ordinance seven sixty-one twenty-five. An ordinance authorizing certain purchases, maximum cost nine point four six eight million for bonds for city roadway improvements. That's what the Budget Director just discussed. That passed through the Finance Committee meeting. We'll be voting on that this evening. From Councilmember Johnson, item thirty, Ordinance nine seventy-one twenty-five. An ordinance authorizing the sale of thirty-four Cherry Street. That also passed the Finance Committee, and we will be voting on that this evening. Item thirty-one, an ordinance authorizing the sale of various city-owned properties to the Albany County Land Bank. That list is, we have provided to us, if anybody would like to know, that's on your desk. That passed through the Finance Committee meeting, and we'll be voting on that this evening. Number thirty-two from Councilmember Love, which is Ordinance eleven seventy-two twenty-five. An ordinance authorizing and directing the grant of an aerial easement to CIDC Albany Center. That passed the Planning Committee meeting, and we'll be voting on that this evening. From Councilmember Kimbrough, Ordinance twelve seventy-two twenty-five. An ordinance authorizing the grant of an easement to the Center Square LLC. That also passed the Planning Committee, and we'll be voting on that this evening. Resolutions introduced from Councilmember Love. Yep.
Yeah, before you give resolutions, I think also I have an ordinance up for an amendment, three forty-one twenty-five, which I think would come before.
Yes, I apologize. That would come before, that would come before that. That's, thank you, Councilmember Conti. Ordinance three forty-one twenty-five from Councilmember Conti, that is cabarets that will be amended.
Yeah, and I sent that out to everyone earlier, so unless anyone has any questions on it. You were just a little while handed an updated sheet. It's the one that says accessory entertainment on the top. It's just a corrected version of what was incorporated in the larger one, so, just to show you what language is being stricken out.
We all also have a copy of those on our desks. Moving on to resolutions introduced, Councilmember Love, Resolution ninety-three eighty-one twenty-five R. A resolution honoring the life and legacy of Bella Medea Nelson. Apologies if I did not pronounce that correctly. And renaming a portion of Sheridan Avenue in her honor. That will go to General Services. We'll then have an MC from Councilmember Conti, Resolution ninety-four eighty-one twenty-five. A resolution of the Common Council declaring its intent to act as lead agency for the state environmental quality review of Ordinance three forty-one twenty-five, and declaring it as an unlisted action. I believe the intent is to pass that this evening. Would you like to speak about that, Councilmember Conti? I meant right now, but, did you want to talk about it at all right now? You can, but you don't have to.
No, this is just part of the secret process related to the cabaret ordinance, finding we have to make so we can move forward. And then, once we get that done, we'll be able to move forward and schedule, still have to schedule a public hearing on this. Brian can answer it, because I'm, is he here? Go ahead.
I just have a question about the outdoor cafes. Do we have a definition for what ambient level is?
There is not a definition, I believe, in city code. But the understood definition of ambient is that it is background, meant to be background atmospheric, and not to be entertainment, central entertainment in and of itself. So it would be, you know, background music that would happen while other activity in a sidewalk cafe or patio is happening, like eating, drinking, or whatever. And that's the intent. It actually came from the Planning Department. And the intent is, and I don't have their email here, but the intent is that it be more of a background atmospheric type.
I guess my concern is that, you know, from my district, we've had significant issues with outdoor speakers at the venues that have sidewalk cafes, particularly given how close and proximity they are to people's homes. I would have concerns about the change in that language. I just don't, I'm not sure that that would really work for my constituency. And I think it would be difficult to to police the outside, the outdoor noise associated with allowing for that type of sound outside.
I've always had the same concerns, because as you know, in my ward, patios back up the backyard, to backyards of residential neighborhood, of residential districts or neighborhoods. So I would have, you know, traditionally had the same concerns, but if it is, and those patios in, I believe in your district also, in terms of the time regulation, they need to be closed by eleven. Where I know in some other districts further downtown, there's a later closing time. So this doesn't change anything in terms of hours of operation. But again, I mean, the intent of ambient is not loud, but more background. And I think even if we can make the amendment tonight, I think even after we make the amendment tonight, if we want to come back and look at a definition of ambient that's not precluded, I don't think that would hold up any, the process as far as trying to ultimately move this forward if we did that. So say after the public hearing, would this change anything if there was a desire to incorporate an amendment related to ambient?
It might, just because the ordinance would have to go before county planning. Their deliberations could potentially involve concerns regarding that.
But it wouldn't anything related to speaker, or, you know, dealing with the public hearing or anything like that?
Probably not, no.
Because the intention of ambient is the same whether or not we have an amendment or not. And it's, it's an understood term.
Yeah, I mean, I think my greater concern was that when those issues arose, because we don't allow for amplified noise in the exterior portion of businesses, the city was easily able to enforce it by just telling the business, like, you're not even supposed to have a speaker asphyxied to the exterior of the building under code. And this sort of changes that. And I think that's my greater concern.
Yeah, I mean, the enforcement would still be there. If the noise level exceeds what would be considered ambient, you can still take action. But we do have establishments who are looking to do something that is more of that more background type music. So adopting the amendment tonight doesn't preclude potentially for the definition maybe of ambient?
This may not be the time for it, and I just have to say, but this is what's wrong with our city right here. You know, when we are going to handcuff businesses that they can't have a speaker. And once again, everywhere you go throughout the United States, businesses are allowed to operate in this manner. And I think that it's another restraint put on businesses to operate in our city. And I just think that it's problematic when we are saying that businesses can't operate in a certain manner that would help them in a financial, in a financial way, you know. The goal of being in business is to draw people to your establishments. And I think that we have to have a discretion for business owners to be able to operate. And I think that it's problematic, the stuff that I'm hearing, is just making it hard for businesses to have social gatherings, you know. People have a right, you know, I've been told people have a right to assemble. And it just seems like we're making it difficult for the social part of this. So just wanted to add that to the conversation, because I think it is going in the wrong direction that we've already been going into for the last twelve years or so. Thank you.
Well, this language does eliminate that prohibition.
I just want to concur with May Keegan, because I know exactly what bars she's talking about, grainies and all those. But like Rick LaJoy, how do you deal with ambient level when you get a call? You know, that's where, I think there's a lot of up in the air. It's going to be tough on our employees, I think, to enforce it if you get a phone call. That's just my take.
Any other questions or comments? Moving on to resolutions held. We have Resolution fifteen thirty-two twenty-five R by Councilmember Adams. That is an authorization of the Department of Assessment and Taxation to place property owned by Praise Tabernacle Church of God on the exempt portions. This church, which everyone agrees was absolutely, should have gotten the exemptions. Didn't fill out all the proper paperwork. Therefore, we are passing this to allow them to get those exemptions back. We have a similar one by Councilmembers Amor for Ohaf Shalom. This passed through the Finance Committee meeting. This will, we'll be voting on this tonight. Sixty-two, sixty-two twenty-five R sponsored by Councilmember Kimbrough. A resolution of the Common Council authorizing Albany Parking Authority to enter into certain leases. There is an amendment with that. We're adding another address on that. That is on our dress, on our desk, but that will be passed this evening as well. Resolution sixty-four sixty-two twenty-five R by Councilmember Zamer. This is the retroactive tax, real property tax exemption for congregation Ohaf Shalom. Similar situation that was passed through the Finance Committee meeting, and we'll be voting on that this evening. And Resolution sixty-eight seventy-one twenty-five R sponsored by Councilmember Frederick. Resolution of the Common Council approving a transfer of budgeted funds and a change in the authorized positions, including the twenty-twenty-five city budget, which will affect the salary rate or salary total. That was discussed by the Finance Committee meeting, and we'll be voting on that tonight. That was something where the APD and DGS both did some creative changes to allow them to basically remove some positions and hire different positions. So it's not a cost to us, but it will allow them to be a lot more efficient and hopefully meet the needs of their staff a lot more. Does anybody have any questions for those? And I just will note, we also will be voting on, in approval of minutes, we'll be voting on the July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five minutes. So that is everything for our meeting tonight. I would note quickly that Councilmember Kimbrough is ill this evening. We would like to do a, another executive session, not right now, but on the CPRB. He's not able to be here this evening. He's been very involved in this process. So we would like to do a meeting on, an emergency meeting on Wednesday. I'm curious how many people would be available for that? Show of hands. Probably be at five-thirty, yeah. Next Wednesday, or, I thought you were talking about this Wednesday? Oh, so it would be on August thirteenth, yes. We could also potentially do, when, at the end of our meeting, go into an executive session and have a brief discussion now. But regardless, because Councilmember Kimbrough has been so deeply involved, we think it would be important to have him be part of the discussion and the update. So we could potentially do both if people are interested and would like an update sooner rather than later. Any, yeah, any thoughts would be welcome.
Do we need to decide right now if we're going to have an executive session?
I think we would need to, it would be helpful to be able to move forward, like, if, it would be helpful to know, because the staff would need to notice it sooner rather than later if we're going to notice it for next Wednesday.
But you said there's still a possibility we could do an executive session tonight?
We could go into an executive session at the end of our meeting tonight and do a brief update. We would like to do a more thorough update with Councilmember Kimbrough regardless. We would like to do a more thorough update with Councilmember Kimbrough regardless. So if people would like to stay afterwards, we can go into executive session and do a brief update. Show of hands, have people interested in that? Then, and I will say, if we don't have a quorum, I guess we could just go chat privately. But we, I think that we will try to move forward with the Wednesday, that would have been a caucus anyway, and so we can do that and just have a more, more time for a thorough discussion. So we'll put something out, and staff will see if people are available. Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah, when we decided that we weren't going to do caucus, the reason why I'm not available is because I made, you know, and if we're going to hold, hold on, let me finish. If we're going to hold a meeting up for Councilman, Kimbrough, we should hold a meeting up for Councilman Johnson, because I've been involved with these conversations, even though I haven't been in the meeting, so I would like to be at that meeting as well.
That is totally understandable, so maybe what we can do is ask staff to put something out tomorrow and see what people can do. Because I agree, and that is, I, the reason why we didn't do the Wednesday caucuses was so that with the millions of meetings that we had, people were able to either go to meetings in their wards, or actually enjoy their lives a bit in the summer. So it's totally understandable that people would have made plans. But we'll have staff send something out and see if we can find a meeting time that we can notice and have a more thorough discussion with Councilmember Kimbrough. And we can certainly make sure that you're there, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else? I see, Chief, are you, Chief, Chief Cox?
Chief Cox.
Are you here for, do you need to talk in?
No.
Okay. All right. Nope. All right, with that, we've got six minutes, and then we'll start our meeting. If anybody has anything that they'd like to say right now, they're welcome to, otherwise we'll re-adjourn them, six minutes.
Plus what?
They might be the same people. They're probably the same people. Marlon Anderson?
Marlon.
Yes, he is. Like to call in order, tonight's only common council meeting, Monday, August 24th, August 4th, excuse me, not rushing the days, August 4th, 2025. Could a clerk please call the roll?
Adams.
Adams.
Anani.
President.
Ballerin.
Here.
Clark.
Hmm.
Conti.
Here.
Pharoah.
Here.
Flynn.
Here.
Frederick. Hoy.
Here.
Johnson. Keegan.
Here.
Kimbrough.
Yes, sir.
Love.
Here.
Robinson. Zamer. Here. Ten total.
Can you get hold?
Mm-hmm.
Um, thank you. Um, will you please rise with me and say the pledge allegiance, and after that, there'll be a moment of silence?
And, um, this should be heard.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you. And now, move on to our next item on our agenda, which is the public comment period. Public comment period, you have five minutes to come and speak upon any issue you wish to. At that time, council members cannot respond to your comments. If they choose to respond to your comments, they will do so at a later time during the agenda. The light means green, means go. And when you come to the table, you just introduce yourself, for the record. You don't have to introduce your address, but just the, the city or town that you are from, that you live in. With that being said, can a clerk please call the first speaker? Also, sorry, when it, when the light turns yellow, that means you have one minute remaining and to close your remarks. Thank you. Can a clerk please call the first speaker?
Simona Fish.
Now, there we go. My name is Simona Fish, I live in the city of Albany. I am the Community Engagement Coordinator with Capital District Tobacco-Free Communities. We work to reduce tobacco use, keep kids from starting, protect people from exposure to secondhand smoke in Albany, Schenectady, and Rensselaer counties. I'm here tonight with members of Reality Check, a youth-led movement that works to expose the truth about tobacco and its impact on our communities. Albany first adopted a tobacco-free policy for city parks and bus shelters in 2011, and then the policy was expanded to make all park property tobacco-free in 2015. We provided signage for the city parks. There have been a couple of significant developments that have motivated a lot of communities to update or expand their existing policies or adopt a new one. Electronic cigarette use has proliferated, most notably among high school-aged youth. Even though youth e-cigarette use has decreased since its peak in 2018, high school students still vape at more than five times the rate of adults. And in March 2021, New York State legalized the recreational use of marijuana. So now, even in outdoor public spaces that have prohibited the smoking of cigarettes, we are seeing too many people vaping or smoking cannabis. New York State law prohibits marijuana and e-cig use only in places where tobacco use is already prohibited by state law, and that doesn't include municipal parks or property. E-cigarettes may pose an even greater danger to the environment than cigarette butts. The devices themselves contain lithium batteries, which are highly flammable, and pose a serious fire risk. The most widely used disposable devices and the disposable pods used, used in reusable devices contain remnants of highly concentrated liquid nicotine, or THC, both of which pose a significant danger to anyone who comes in contact with them, and they become a significant litter problem in public spaces. These devices are not harmless, they emit aerosols and contain nicotine, heavy metals, and other substances. When used in public parks, they expose others, especially children, to these chemicals and normalize the act of smoking in spaces meant to be safe and healthy. Yesterday, our Reality Check team visited Swinburne Park for a cleanup. DGS does a wonderful job keeping our parks clean, but it is impossible to clean up all the cigarette butts. We brought some of our youth members here tonight because they wanted to share what they saw and how it made them feel. They're the ones who use these parks, they deserve to do so in an environment that supports their health. What I have here is from Earth Day, we cleaned up Beverwick Park, and this is cigarette butts, vapes at Cigarillo's, collected in less than an hour. So, I'm sure-
Good eve- good evening, everyone. My name is Myla Evans, and I'm going to be a junior in high school. I live in Altamont, and I'm currently a Reality Check ambassador, and today I just wanted to share my experience with tobacco vaping and nicotine products. There have been many times in my life where I've been openly exposed to cigarettes, vapes, and other smoking products, whether it's been at school, in this city, or other places I've traveled. Smoking and vaping are present everywhere. Yesterday in Swinburne Park, we picked a little area to clean and observe how many cigarettes and nicotine products we could find. In approximately five minutes, we had found over a hundred cigarette butts on the ground in the small area of the park. We continued to pick up cigarette butts on the ground, and we found over a hundred cigarette butts. For the next 10 minutes, this container displays all the tobacco litter we found, approximately 400 pieces of cigarette butts and tobacco packaging. This park is not just for adults, but for children of any age. We also picked a spot right by a neighboring splash pad that was being designed for children. When children are exposed to smoking and vaping, it can have a serious negative impact on their health and how they grow. Seven million people die from smoking tobacco each year, and 1.6 million people die just being exposed to the tobacco smoke. This means, just being exposed to these kinds of chemicals can be fatal and have serious effects. Having this many people constantly smoking around young kids also normalizes it. If kids grow up thinking that it's normal to smoke, they will be more likely to try it, and so the cycle begins. Not only can children be affected, but I saw squirrels and birds roaming the park, especially in the area which contained the high amounts of cigarette waste. If wildlife is exposed to these products in their homes, they can also be harmed. They may accidentally consume these products, which will be extremely dangerous for them and possibly fatal. To try and spread awareness about this issue, we chalked the walk. We wrote facts, inspirational quotes, and uplifting words to try and educate and encourage people to understand the dangers of tobacco use. This was a creative way for us to spread our message. We wrote these out on a pathway throughout the park, so as people are walking, they're able to read what we wrote and hope they are impactful. Thank you for letting me share my experiences and thoughts with you tonight. It's important to educate others of the impact of smoking and vaping. And we are happy to share about the work we are doing through Reality Check to spread awareness to our peers and our community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk call next speaker?
Amara.
My name is Amra Mohammed. I am 15 years old and going to be a junior in high school, and I live in Cohoes. I am raising my concerns about the amount of cigarette and e-cigarette usage in Swinburne Park. Yesterday, when I went to clean up the park with my peers, we saw many cigarette butts improperly discarded. This is concerning, because Swinburne Park is a tobacco-free area, but only has a small sign on a wall indicating that it is. Swinburne Park is also a place where many children play and spend time at. Seeing people smoking might influence them to do it themselves, costing them and other people's lives. Without proper signs indicating that the usage of tobacco in the park is not allowed, it normalizes cigarette use in a place where many young lungs play. Solutions for this problem could be putting more signs around designated areas that smoking is not allowed on park premises. Parks are meant to be a place of joy and community, where family and friends can spend time. This peaceful environment is disrupted by something so avoidable like cigarettes and the litter it leaves behind. Cigarettes are the most littered item in the world, and is, and is made up of plastic fibers that could take 10 years to dis- decompose. They sit in the soil, go into our water systems, and linger in places where children play. Cigarettes can also pose a fire risk. One lit cigarette in dry grass or mulch can ignite into a big flame and destroy nature and even harm people near it. Keeping the people safe in areas with lots of, of people should be a top priority for the city of Albany. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call next speaker?
Ashita Mizra.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ashita Mizra, and I'm a teen volunteer who cares deeply for our environment and our community. I spend time in parks and sidewalks, and have noticed how often cigarette butts and vape pods are littered in places where families, kids, and even where pets play. These items are not just ugly, but they are toxic to wildlife, soil, and our water systems. I've seen firsthand how much tobacco waste can pile up. Every cigarette butt or vape pod that ends up on the ground can potentially release chemicals into our, our environment, and that waste doesn't go easily. that smoking is not allowed on park premises. Parks are meant to be a place of joy and community, where family and friends can spend time. This peaceful environment is disrupted by something so avoidable like cigarettes and the litter it leaves behind. Cigarettes are the most littered item in the world, and is made up of plastic fibers that could take ten years to decompose. They sit in the soil, go into our water systems, and linger in places where children play. Cigarettes can also pose a fire risk. One lit cigarette in dry grass or mulch can ignite into a big flame and destroy nature and even harm people near it. Keeping the people safe in areas with lots of people should be a top priority for the city of Albany. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Ashida Mizra.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ashida Mizra, and I'm a teen volunteer who cares deeply for our environment and our community. I spend time in parks and sidewalks and have noticed how often cigarette butts and vape pods are littered in places where families, kids, and even where pets play. These items are not just ugly, but they are toxic to wildlife, soil, and our water systems. I've seen firsthand how much tobacco waste can pile up. Every cigarette butt or vape pod that ends up on the ground can potentially release chemicals into our environment, and that waste doesn't go easily. It stays, it leaches toxins, and it sets a horrible example for younger kids who see it as normal. A smoke-free, vape-free environment is about more than just litter. It's about the air we breathe. Many people, including kids, parents, and seniors, have asthma or other conditions that make them sensitive to smoke and aerosols. Parks are supposed to be safe, healthy spaces, not places where you have to worry about breathing harmful chemicals or stepping on waste. That is why it is important for our community to have clean, healthy parks in and around Albany, where everyone can enjoy nature without worrying about tobacco waste and secondhand aerosols. Every action we make today impacts our future.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Marlin Anderson.
Good evening, members of the council, members of the public. For those of you who are not aware who I am, which have to be a small amount of people, my name is Marlin Anderson. I am a current candidate for mayor, even though you wouldn't know it, and a longtime community advocate in the city of Albany. And I am coming forward because, to be quite frank, I am extremely annoyed with daily having to wade through virtual filth in this city. Every day, I live at 214 Lark Street, by the way, corner of Lark Estate. Every day, I have to walk over people to get to the bus stop. Every day, I have to walk around people to come out my home. I am tired of wading through filth and human, to be quite frank, human garbage. I am tired of standing in bus stops, being harassed for a dollar to be swept onto the bus. I'm tired of having to shoe homeless people away or walk over them when I'm walking to the laundromat. And the time has come for this city to take direct action. They talk about having ordinances to rid the park of cigarette butts and things of that nature. How about having ordinance to rid the streets of homeless and vagrants? Those cigarette butts they talk about, that's where they're coming from, from homeless and vagrants. Because cigarette butts are all over the streets. They leave their garbage everywhere. The question is, when is there going to be something active to be done about this? Now, I walked away from advocacy because I would have the hope that this building was going to affect change in this city. But I can see that it hasn't, and I see the direction that this city is going. There is going to be nothing done. So I am bringing my voice back to the table. I am going to resume my advocacy because we need a loud voice in this city to address the issues that are not being addressed. And this is primarily among them. We have a decline in the quality of life in this city, a steep decline, and nothing is being done about it. And it's time for people to raise their voices and say, enough is enough. We need to eradicate the homeless, vagrant, drug, and mentally challenged problem that we have in this city. And we gotta stop treating it with kid gloves, and we gotta start treating it like the problem that it is. Because it's destroying this city. We have thousands of people that ride in and out of this city daily and never want to come back because of what they see. Because what this place looks like is a giant version of Perry Shelter. This city has become a giant version of that shelter. And when are you in this building going to do something about it? Because you go through the same thing I have to go through. I know you have to step over homeless people. I know you have to shoe away vagrants. I know you have to shoe away the beggars. And it's unconscionable. If you go up to that corner of Lark Street right now, it's unacceptable what you see on that corner, and nothing is being done about it. When is enough enough? I can't sleep at night for hoes and insane people howling all night, fighting all night. It's unacceptable. People should not have to live like this in this city. You've let the street people take over this city, and enough is enough. Something needs to be done. So, my advocacy is back. Look forward to seeing a whole bunch in the future.
Thank you. Can a clerk call the next speaker?
Donald Finley.
Good day, council. You'll have to forgive me, it's been a while since I've been done this. Like my friend that just got up from this chair, I'm a former family court advocate, civil rights advocate. I'm a former executive board member of the New York Civil Rights Council, and I'm a stout family court and child advocate.
Can you state your name and-
My name is Donald Finley. I am a resident of Troy and lobbyist to Albany.
Thank you.
So with that being said, my name is Donald Finley. I need to provide a public notice to Albany. This is in accordance with the USCS Rule of Civil Procedures, as well as Rule 17 and Rule 20 of the United States Supreme Court. The Constitution of the United States has an overreaching requirements that every state must follow. I do not think anyone will deny that in this room, that states cannot enact their own alternative legislation substituted for the guarantees of the Constitution of the United States. That would mean the state laws are more powerful than the Constitution. Clause 1 of Amendment 5 to the United States Constitution says, "No person shall be held to answer for a capital or otherwise infamous crime unless on presentment or grand jury." However, the state of New York has enacted its own alternative legislation that permits the prosecuting attorney or police officer to be charged by information, not by indictment. That is unconstitutional. And a moment violation is when you pay a public official to break the law. The Constitution has two areas that enforce this. One is Article 1, Section 10, where it says that no state shall create any law that shall impair the obligation of contracts. Police officers, prosecutors, judges are all under contract, a contract to perform that based upon the oath or affirmation that they took. The contract parameters are defined within the Constitution of the United States when the state enacts a law that directs their agents to disobey the law. The Constitution of the United States that would be in violation of Article 1, Section 10. Now, the Fourteenth Amendment is the other place that you will find the reinforcement of this issue, and that is where it says that no state shall create or enforce any law that shall abridge the privileges or immunities of the United States citizens. The privileges and immunities of the United States citizens are at a minimum. Those enumerated within the Bill of Rights, the first ten amendments, they cannot be impaired. And thus, the state of New York has enacted a law in its inferior constitution that is permitting public officials in law enforcement, whom you pay to violate the Constitution of the United States as a result in their inordinate amount of people currently imprisoned in the state of New York illegally and unconstitutionally. To honor Downing, is a litigate this issue at the United States Supreme Court. I am here to notify you that if you continue to pay public officials to break the law, there can be criminal sanctions that would come from that. We don't want to go down that path, but officials must be made aware that paying people to disobey the law is an innumerate violation. It is illegal, it is unconstitutional. I'm asking all you honorable individuals to please look at Clause 1 of Amendment 5, occur what I'm saying to be true, and then direct your public officials to act in a lawful constitutional manner, constituents with the obligations that are codified in the Constitution of the United States of America. I have a notice that I would like to put on record. Thank you very much, and God bless.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Frederick Tibbetts Jr.
Thank you. So I'm Frederick Tibbetts Jr., and I'm here tonight representing the United Tenants Association. And Behin Francis is our representative, and she's helping us out at Danker Village. Unfortunately, I am sort of the quiet person at Danker Village in this group, and I'm just sort of working with the people that work there to try to have them be more compassionate toward the renters and be more reasonable. But unfortunately, the guy that, or the company that runs Cass Hill, which has a lot of places, including Danker Village, they have only one purpose, and that is to maximize profits at the expense of reasonable repairs and things like that. So that sort of paints the picture. I want to add that my family came to Albany in 1899, and they've been very generous and served. My godfather was Kattie Dugan of Dugan Casey Lyons, the law firm. And I was very fortunate that Mayor Tom Whelan asked me to be in the Albany All-America City Commission in 1978. I accepted, and in seventy-nine, we became an All-America City. And that's where I met John Egan, who worked for Mario Cuomo and the brains behind the Albany Airport, the new Albany Airport. And we became very good friends. And like, I was very good friends with Erastis Corning for many years. And I'm an Albany person, born here, graduated from Albany High, and then I went to New York City and around the world. But, in part, because of my experience, and I've been on many Board of Directors in New York City, I'm going to be increasingly involved at Danker Village in trying to work, again, nicely, compassionately, not as a tough guy, and to try to turn them around so that they go to their management and say, yeah, we really should be more concerned with those who live here. And a lot of them are immigrants from other countries. I mean, you know, from Afghanistan and Turkey and all over. And, you know, they're just getting by. And I'm going both to SUNY and Hudson Valley, I'm going to teach again in psychology. I'm a clinical psychologist. So I'm going to teach again, and I'm running a new psychology at SUNY and also at Hudson Valley. And I help lots of students at both schools because I've devoted the rest of my life to serving those less fortunate and all others. And I work for free. So, anyway, that's who I am and why I know I can make a difference there, and why Bevan has confidence in me to represent her when she couldn't be here tonight. But something has to be done about that company. They just don't care. And I can give you a million examples, but that's the case. So I hope something comes of this, and again, we'll be working with Bevan and the United Tenants and really try to make this happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can a clerk-
Go Albany.
Can a clerk call the next speaker?
Charles Robinson.
Yes, Charles Robinson. Family been living in this city for over two hundred years. Government of the people, by the people, for the people. Government of the people, by the people, for the people. I didn't write these rules. I didn't write the Constitution. I didn't write the Constitution. Freedom speech, I have to write the bare arms. I didn't write this, I just understand this. But for, I'm sixty-five years old, and for my whole life journey, especially since this lady became mayor, I watched people, fifteen county council members, get voted in by the people, but act like they got interviewed for this job by her. Y'all didn't defend the people. The only thing you defended was this administration. And the reason why you were able to defend this administration is because the police officers don't understand that they're supposed to protect and serve. It's called protect and serve. I sit back and I watch people who look like me, who own real estate, their families had houses for thirty, forty years, they lose their houses because of this administration. The building department constantly showing up for civil matters. Police only supposed to represent criminal matters, but they show up for civil matters. Now, on the corner of Second and Henry Johnson, there's been somebody who look like me that been selling fruits and vegetables for forty years. For forty years. The building department want to show up and stop my nephew from selling watermelons, and then they didn't just show up, they showed up with eight police officers with guns. Poor man just trying to make a living, feed his kids. Feed his kids. And there's no repercussions because we can't go to none of our elected officials to defend us. For the tyranny that's constantly been going on during my life cycle. Y'all got elected by the people, oh, you representing the people? The people can't eat, drink, and be married? They gotta worry about you stopping me from doing anything? I can't even imagine what it's like to be a young person now. I'm sixty-five years old, I don't live my life. You have to go into this matrix. Government of the people, by the people, for the people. You're not representing the people. The police supposed to protect and serve the people. You're not supposed to protect and serve this administration. I paid four hundred thousand dollars in taxes in 2024. Four hundred thousand, and I still get stopped constantly. I still get fed and fed constantly. Every time I try to put money back in this community, I get stopped by the building department. There's nobody in the history that has existed that got more stop work orders than me. And I'm a carpenter by trade. I can do what you can't do. I'm a carpenter. I can't even pry my trade because I'm worried about this administration and the antics that they apply to the people. Y'all work for us, we don't work for you. Start representing us. Last week, we wait a whole year for one first festival for all of us to show up at. It's a hundred cops there. You need teenagers to control the narrative, or you gotta stop. But soon as you stop us, anybody who look like me from being on the court, who got on the court after me? The Mexicans. The only place, the only one to bring racism to, but I'm gonna bring racism real quick. Yo, you worrying about us, in the meantime, everybody else is sneaking in the back door. The Chinese, the Arabs, the Mexicans, but you worrying about us.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Can a clerk please call next speaker?
Alexa Bonlepo. Sorry if I butchered her name.
Hi, my name's Alexa Bontempo, and I've lived in Albany for 43 years. As you all know, I oppose community water fluoridation in Albany. And based on all of the canvassing we did prior to the passage of the law to fluoridate, the majority of persons living in Albany are also opposed. People do not want to see a neurotoxin at any dose added to their drinking water. Our water should be safe and pure with no added medications. We want to make our choices regarding our medical treatments. With all due respect, we do not feel our council members, our mayor, an NYU dentist, any health commissioner or doctor who does not know our individual medical concerns, we don't want them making decisions on our whole-body health needs. And I'm truly mystified as to why dentists are regarded as experts in whole-body health. They studied and practiced dentistry. It is not their job to understand the systemic impact of chemicals on the body. I'm not sure why their opinions carry more weight than the opinions of epidemiologists and scientists who've been studying the effects of fluoride ingestion on the body for years. And I'm baffled as to why these experts were not and still are not permitted to present to you. Also, I read today the Water Board's communication regarding the fluoridation project. It's here, and I can hand it over if anyone wants to see it if they haven't already. And I gotta say, I was appalled at the out-of-date nonsense in that communication. I would hope you guys had the opportunity to comment on it before it's released, if it's, I don't know if it's been released already. I was happy a couple months ago when Ms. Zamer noted the importance of communications. Well, what's being communicated here is useless to the water-drinking public. There are no warnings for pregnant women, to people with kidney disease, to people who will double the fluoride dose if they're already giving prescribed fluoride drops to their kids. There's no talk about alerting doctors or dentists in Albany and surrounding locations about this change. This is just garbage. I implore you all to do the right thing, do what your constituents want, don't add fluoride to our water. And for those who think about their legacy, I just have to bring this up, Dr. Whelan and Mayor Sheehan, they've mentioned their legacy several times before the law was passed. The fact that legacy was even mentioned in the discussions to fluoridate, kind of, it's unsettling to me. But since it was mentioned, now that you know more about the science, do you want your legacy to be lowered IQs in Albany's children? Please begin to acknowledge the science. I'm glad I'm on the right side of the science, and I feel really good about being here to represent the vast majority of Albany residents who are also opposed to water fluoridation. Thank you for the time to speak again today. Does anyone want this? Has anyone seen this? I can hand it over.
Yes, the council members have received that in their emails. Yes, they have. Ms. Farrell, we've reached our 30-minute limit. We have a few more.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to add 30 minutes to public comment.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Can you call the next speaker?
Patricia Pierce.
My name is Patricia Pierce, and I'm a resident of Albany and a representative of Safe Water Albany. This is the city's, what Alexa just actually showed you, I have a copy of this too, okay? So this is the city's Water Department's statement on fluoridation that will be sent to ratepayers this week. It's entitled "Water Fluoridation: Facts, Figures, and Frequently Asked Questions. Everything You Need to Know About the 2025 Fluoridation Project." Let me repeat that everything you need to know about the 2025 fluoridation project. This is a joke, but it's not funny at all. I'm not questioning the competence of Water Department employees in building equipment, providing water, and determining costs, but the Department's statement on fluoridation itself are a travesty. The sole source of their information came from one CDC report on fluoride. It's dated August 2001. It's 24 years old. The committee writing that report is almost completely made up of dentists, not a single medical doctor or toxicologist. The report itself acknowledges that, quote, "The safety of fluoride is not addressed." For safety, it refers to other documents, but when you look at the fine print, you discover these documents are dated between 1984 and 1997, between 28 and 41 years old. This is cherry picking. This is refusing to acknowledge scientific advancement. This is misinformation at its worst. Here are some recent facts that the Water Department determined Albany residents don't need to know. In August last year, the National Toxicology Program, the highest-level review in the country, reported that 18 out of the 19 highest-quality studies linked higher fluoride with lower IQs, several at levels in fluoridated water. The weight of scientific evidence of permanent brain damage is overwhelming. In September last year, a federal court ruled, based entirely on the science, that fluoridation, quote, "poses an unreasonable risk of reduced IQ in children." In October last year, the Cochrane Collaboration, which is the gold standard of measuring health interventions, reported that the 21 highest-quality studies showed water fluoridation reduced cavities by 0% to 4%, at most 1/4 of 1 cavity per child. Unlike toothpaste, water fluoridation has no significant effectiveness, if any at all. This Water Department doesn't disclose these truths. It buries them. It's shameful. The people of Albany deserve better. They deserve truth, and they deserve a council that isn't afraid to address that truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk call next speaker?
Brian Borton.
It's not only common courtesy, but your duty to put your phones down and pay attention to those who come before this council to speak during the public comment period. My name is Brian Borton. I live in Albany. Regarding public water fluoridation, you've only heard one presentation given by one side using old data points and propaganda. Simply put, you were conned. In order to make any informed decision, a deliberating body should hear presentations of equal time from both sides of the issue, not just one. You are being delinquent in your responsibilities by failing to allow those opposed to water fluoridation an opportunity to make their presentation of equal duration in the same format which was afforded to Dr. Whelan. To me now, it seems you are more concerned with protecting the mayor's legacy pet project than you are protecting our vulnerable children of Albany. It appears you no longer represent your constituents, misguided gilding and lathan dentists maybe, but not your constituents. You are forcing medication on the public. This is plainly wrong. A child could tell you that. To say fluoridation is now in the mayor's hand is a total cop-out, a willing abdication of your authority. Do you really want to set that precedent? God, unbelievable. Law K of 2023 needs to be rescinded. Only this governing body can do that. Repeal Law K of 2023.
Can you please focus on your statements, please?
I'm done with my statement, but I'm being treated very rudely by some council members.
Thank you, sir. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Tom Ellis.
My name's Tom Ellis. I live in Albany. I have two concerns that I wanted to discuss tonight. Last week, I attended an emergency meeting of the Albany Community Police Review Board. The meeting was called because the Community Police Review Board members believe the city government is attempting to remove the board's access to outside legal counsel from ongoing litigation involving the city. There was discussion about if, why, and how this is occurring. If I correctly heard, Councilman Tom Hoey, who spoke at the meeting, he said he supports the restoration of outside legal counsel, and he was speaking for the city council on this. I urge the city to immediately restore outside legal counsel to the board, for the city council to determine how the interruption occurred, and to make sure that future ruptures do not occur. The board is involved in important litigation, and access to continuous outside independent legal counsel is vital for the board to be effective in conducting its work. My other concern is the usual one of the last two years, and it is, will the city council allow Safe Water Albany, Safe Water Albany to make a less than one-hour Zoom presentation at a General Services Committee meeting this month about the hazards of water fluoridation? The science concerning water fluoridation continues to evolve, and much has changed during the year and a half since the city government approved water fluoridation. There has been, in August 2024, National Toxicology Program report of the federal government mentioned earlier, that concluded higher water fluoridation concentrations are, quote, "consistently associated with lower IQs in children," end quote. There was a September 2024 federal court decision by Judge Edward Chen, and he ruled that fluoridation, quote, "poses an unreasonable risk of reduced IQ in children," end quote. He specifically wrote on page two, "The issue before the court is whether the plaintiffs have established by a preponderance of the evidence that the fluoridation of drinking water at levels typical in the United States poses an unreasonable risk of injury to health of the public within the meaning of the amended Toxic Substances Control Act. For the reasons set forth below, the court so finds. Specifically, the court finds that fluoridation of water at 0.7 milligrams per liter, the level presently considered optimal in the United States, poses an unreasonable risk of reduced IQ in children." Utah and Florida banned water fluoridation within the year, within the past year. The Saratoga County, town of Wilton's, their water department rejected water fluoridation last year, I think. As I have said many times, none of you nor your experts can prove that water fluoridation at seven parts, at 0.7 parts per million is safe. Sorry, 0.7 parts per million. Is the city government willing to listen to the order, sorry, is the city government, is the city council willing to listen to the anti-water fluoridation experts that we can provide? I hope you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call next speaker?
Rick North.
My name is Rick North. I'm from Wellesley, Massachusetts, and a member of Safe Water Albany. My career has been in nonprofit health management, 21 years with the American Cancer Society, and seven years with the Physicians for Social Responsibility. I've dedicated my life to public health. For the past 14 years, I've studied fluoridation intensively and advised city councils all over the country. So far, you've trusted the main fluoridation promoter, the American Dental Association, and everyone at the state and local level who has followed them. I supported fluoridation most of my life. I trusted the ADA, and then I found out they had betrayed my trust, so I changed my mind. They misrepresented the science, and they lied, and no one needs to be a scientist to know it. Here's their email to you a day before your vote last year, saying that fluoride is, quote, "not a medication." And here's the official statement from the FDA stating it is. The ADA email also said, "None of the 64 studies cited by the National Toxicology Program making higher fluoride to lower IQs looked at the fluoride levels used in fluoridated water." Here are just three out of the 18 highest-quality studies that did just that, Bashash, Green, and Till. You've all been given these documented facts. ADA's website states that, quote, "No country in Europe bans community water fluoridation." Here are the statements of seven countries that do. Here's one quote, "The addition of chemicals to drinking water is prohibited by law in the Netherlands." Now, that sounds like a ban to me. Drinking water should not be used as a vehicle for pharmaceuticals. It's not just the FDA. The Dutch know very well a drug when they see one. And it's not just the ADA. Mr. Hoey, you promised you and the council we withdraw the legislation to fluoridate if the lawsuit against the EPA was successful. You've broken your promise. And Mr. Flynn, you said you'd allow our experts to present to the General Services Committee. You haven't. You've broken your promise. Fluoridation is based on misinformation, cherry picking, old, low-quality studies, suppressing the newest high-quality studies, and outright lies, and we provided the references to you to prove it. If you're not absolutely certain that fluoridation is safe for everyone, how can you play doctor and justify risking the health of thousands of people? This issue affects every resident of Albany. It's It's adding a known neurotoxin to the water supply that will increase the risk of irreversible brain damage of every baby born in Albany. It's forcing every low-income parent that can't afford an expensive filter to put their children in harm's way. That's unethical. That's immoral. That's your legacy if fluoridation goes through. I can only hope that you want your legacy to be more honorable than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk call the next speaker?
As I sit here tonight, I heard constituent after constituent talk about legacy. The city of Albany killed the man's legacy with just one phone call. A man that migrated from the Jim Crow South to make a better life for himself and his family here in Albany, New York. Farming is what he knew, and farming is what he did. It was not only him. Most people who migrated themselves to the north, they grew their own fruits and vegetables. Most of them grew right in their own backyard. At harvest time, they would store up what they could. They would share with their neighbors and sell whatever produce they had left to make ends meet. From reading the law, it looks like the city encouraged such entrepreneurship spirit. That law is still on the books today. I would like to give those who don't know the history of Henry Johnson Boulevard. It was once called Northern Boulevard. This was a thriving economic hub for blacks in the city of Albany. You had bars, you had restaurants, dry cleaners, liquor stores, even a bakery. You name it, it was on Northern Boulevard. Summer after summer, since his migration north, you can find him on the corner of Second Street and Northern Boulevard with fresh collard greens, watermelon, and corn, just to name a few. He never paid that $5 fine. Why? Because he had permission from the owner who occupied a business on the same corner that now sits our Public Safety Building. And the mayor never issued a order to shut him down. I was told that the mayor always frequent his fruit stand and buy fruits and vegetables to take home himself. Where did the city go wrong? I mean, this is a question I have to ask. It's not that what I sit here and say is not true. We talking fruits and vegetables, that's taxes up on the state level, that taxes up on the county level. You know, how can you have this legacy? Now, we have his grandkids that's taking up the legacy. I mean, do you know how hard it is to get in the fields and plant? Do you know how hard it is to get in the field and weed, and water, and nurture? I'm just saying Albany have got away from what really made Albany work in communities abroad. Madison Avenue, when Italians came, what did they do? Did you have police coming up and knocking over their fruit stands where their babies, maybe the ones that's there, trying to sell the fruit? Not just one, eight, then code enforcement? It could have been a more respectful way that was approached. It could have been a more respect, because if it was me, I would have been to jail. I have, it was me at one time. I was arrested. My fruit was arrested. I was thrown in a paddy wagon. My fruit was thrown in a paddy wagon. I was in jail. They put me in the lockup overnight. Why would they put me in the lockup overnight? Because I believed I was right. The next day, when I went in front of the judge, there was no case. There was no paperwork. So if that would have been me on that corner with that interaction, I would have been in handcuffs. Because I believe that is just too much going on, and we talking about unifying our city. You know, we talking about making ways to, if I'm black, you do not see no type of economic development. What do you think they gonna do? So I'm just saying, we are legislators. We create law. I'm just saying, that's what we do. We got 15 Democrats. There's no opposition here. So why can't we just get on the page, the same page, and just do what's right to move our city forward?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, County Legislature Robinson.
And future council city men.
Well, right now, you're the county legislator, so gotta go by the title you have today, sir. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. That concludes our public comment period. We're moving on to next approval of minutes from previous meetings. Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed the minutes from July 21, 2025, and ask for their passage.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Approval of minutes passes. We're gonna move on to now consideration of our local laws. Local laws introduced. Ms. Keegan.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to notice Local Law A of 2025 and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the local law?
A of 2025, sponsored by Councilmember Keegan. Introduction only, a local law amending Chapter 42, Departments and Commissions of the Code of the City of Albany by adding a new Part 43 thereto, creating the City of Albany's Commission on Disabilities.
Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. That will go to Human Rights, Human Resources Committee.
Ms. Farrell? I think that's it. Hold all. That's the only local law left?
Apologies. The rest of the local laws will be held.
Thank you. Reports of understanding committees. None? Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Frederick, the Finance Committee met on Wednesday, July 30th. The following pieces of legislation were voted out of the committee with a positive recommendation and will be voted on this evening. Resolution 687125R, Resolution 153225R, Resolution 646225R, Ordinance 44125, Ordinance 66125, Ordinance 76125, Ordinance 97125, Ordinance 107125. And that is...
Thank you. Mr. Ballerin?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Planning Committee met on July 31st and moved forward with a passive recommendation, Ordinance 11-72-25, as well as Ordinance 12-72-25. Vote on the agenda for today.
Thank you. Mr. Hoi?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee will be meeting on August 12th to discuss several pieces of legislation that we need to address. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, moving on to considerations of local laws. Local laws introduced. Ms. Farrell?
Ordinances introduced.
Ordinances. What did I say? Local laws? Did I say local laws? Ordinances introduced, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Frederick, I notice Ordinance 138125 and ask for its introduction.
Can you just read the, can you read the local ordinance?
An ordinance amending Ordinance Number 46.10223, which authorized certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of $600,000, and authorized the lease financing or the issuance of $600,000 serial bonds of said city to pay the costs thereof DGS fuel storage and distribution system by increasing such authorization to $800,000.
Thank you. Ms. Farrell?
That will go to the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Continuing on, ordinance introduced. Mr. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Ordinance 148125 and ask for its introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance amending Chapter 313 Plumbing of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to the membership, I'm sorry, in relation to membership of the Examining Board of Plumbers.
Thank you. Ms. Farrell?
That will go to the General Services Committee.
Thank you. And back to you, Ms. Farrell. We have MC.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ask to add Ordinance 44125 to the agenda under majority consent.
I was, this ordinance as well?
I notice Ordinance 158125 and ask for it to be added to the agenda via majority consent.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the grant of an easement over a portion of city-owned property at 520 Livingston Avenue, Tax Map Parcel Number 6539-1-19, to Niagara Mohawk Power Corporation for the installation and maintenance of power supply to the Albany West Community Center.
Thank you. And there's a call for a vote on this as well, right, Ms. Farrell?
Yes, Mr. President.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Ordinances added. Ms. Farrell, because Mr. Robinson is not here.
Councilmember Love will be introducing this on behalf of Councilmember Love.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Ordinance 158125 and ask for its passage.
Clerk has already read the ordinance into record, so we'll call for a roll call vote.
Adams. Anani.
Yes.
Ballerin.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Conti.
Yes.
Farrell. Yes. Flynn.
Yes.
Frederick. Hoi.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Johnson.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Kimbrough. Love.
Yes.
Robinson. Zamer. 10 yeses.
Ordinance passes. Now moving on to ordinances held. Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to amend, excuse me, I move to amend Ordinance 34125.
Is there any objection to this amendment? Seeing none, the amendment passes. Moving right along, now the MC, the other MC. Oh, no, it was 441. It was already MC'd, yeah, sorry. Since she's not here, Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. That same thing got me, too. On behalf of Councilmember Frederick, I notice Ordinance 44125 and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the grant of an easement over a portion of the city-owned property at 5 Mill Road, Tax Map Parcel Number 75.00-2-8, to Eastern Gas Transmission and Storage Incorporated for the replacement of an existing pipeline at the property.
Any discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Adams. Nani. Anani.
That's mine. Yes.
Ballerin.
Yes.
Clark. Conti.
Yes.
Farrell. Yes. Flynn.
Yes.
Frederick. Hoi.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Kimbrough. Love.
Yes.
Robinson. Zamer. Yes. We have 10.
Ordinance passes. Continuing on, introduction, ordinance is held, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Ordinance 6.61.25 and ask for it to be read in a voice vote.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing the sale of the Ash Grove Place Common Alley, Tax Map Parcel Number 76.49-3-57, to the Community Builders Incorporated.
Discussion on this ordinance. Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Adams. Anani.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Ballerin.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Clark. Conti.
Yes.
Farrell. Yes, co-sponsor please. Flynn.
Yes.
Frederick. Hoi.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Johnson.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Kimbrough. Love.
Yes.
Robinson. Zamer. Yes. 10. We have 10 yeses.
Ordinance passes. Continuing on, Ms. Farrell for Ms. Frederick.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Frederick, I notice Ordinance 76125 and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of $9,468,000, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of $9,468, 000 serial bonds of said city to pay the costs thereof citywide roadway improvements.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Adams. Anani.
Yes.
Ballerin.
Yes.
Clark. Conti.
Yes.
Farrell. Yes. Flynn.
Yes.
Frederick. Hoi.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Kimbrough. Love.
Yes.
Robinson. Zamer. Yes. We have 10 yeses.
Ordinance passes. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Ordinance 9.71.25, ask for it to be read in a voice vote.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing the sale of 34 Cherry Street, Tax Map Parcel Number 76.66-2-5, to the Albany Housing Authority.
Any discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Adams. Anani.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Ballerin.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Clark. Conti.
Yes.
Farrell. Yes. Flynn.
Yes.
Frederick. Hoi.
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Johnson.
Yes.
Keegan.
Yes.
Kimbrough. Love.
Yes.
Robinson.
Robinson? And Zamer?
Yes.
We have ten yeses.
Ordinance passes. Uh, Ms. Farrell, on behalf of Ms. Frederick?
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Frederick, I notice ordinance ten seventy-one twenty-five and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
Yes. An ordinance authorizing the sale of various city-owned properties to the Albany County Land Bank.
Discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams? Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Clark? Conti?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Frederick? Hoy?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Keegan, I mean, sorry, Kimbrough? Love?
Yes.
Robinson? And Zamer?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Moving on, Ms., Love?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance eleven seventy-two twenty-five and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the grants of a, of an aerial easement to CIDC Albany Center LLC over certain rights of way on Howard and Wendell Streets.
Any discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams? Anani? Ballerin?
Yes.
Clark? Conti?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Frederick? Hoy?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Kimbrough? Love?
Yes.
Robinson? Zamer?
Yes.
Ten yeses.
Ordinance passes. Continuing on, Ms. Farrell for Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Kimbrough, I notice ordinance twelve seventy-two twenty-five and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance or authorizing and directing the grant of an easement to the Center Square LLC over a portion of the city right-of-way adjacent, adjacent to twelve thirty-three Broadway, also known as Thirty-Three Center, tax map parcel number sixty-six dot twenty-nine dash two dash fifty-nine.
Any discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams? Anani? Ballerin?
Yes.
Clark? Conti?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Frederick? Hoy?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Kimbrough? Love?
Yes.
Robinson? Zamer?
Yes.
Total of ten.
Ordinance passes. I think that, Ms. Farrell?
The rest of the ordinances are held.
Thank you. Moving on to resolutions, introduction of resolutions, uh, Ms. Love?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution ninety-three eighty-one twenty-five R and ask for his introduction.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution honoring the life and legacy of Vella Madeir Nelson and renaming a portion of Sheridan Avenue in her honor.
Thank you. Ms. Farrell?
That will go to General Services.
Thank you. And I'll come back to you, Ms. Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I ask that resolution ninety-four eighty-one twenty-five R be added to the agenda via majority consent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hoy. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Uh, Mr. Conti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution ninety-four eighty-one twenty-five R, request passage and a vote thereon.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council declaring its intent to act as lead agency for the state environmental quality review of ordinance three point forty-one point twenty-five and declaring it an unlisted action.
Thank you. Miss, any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams? Anani? Ballerin?
Yes.
Clark? Conti?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Frederick? Hoy?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Kimbrough? Love?
Yes.
Robinson? Zamer?
Yes.
Ten.
Uh, resolution passes. Moving on to resolutions held, um, Ms. Farrell? For Mr. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Adams, I notice resolution fifteen thirty-two twenty-five R and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council authorizing the Commissioner of the Department of Assessment and Taxation to place property owned by the Praise Tabernacle Church of God on the exempt portion of the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three assessment rolls and to exempt such property from taxes based on these, on those rules.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams? Anani?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Ballerin?
Uh, yes, co-sponsor please.
Clark? Conti?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Frederick? Hoy?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Kimbrough? Love?
Yes.
Robinson? Zamer?
Yes.
Ten yeses.
Resolution passes. Um, Ms. Farrell for Mr. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Kimbrough, I notice resolution sixty-two sixty-two twenty-five R as amended and ask for its passage.
Is there any objections to the amended version of this resolution? No objections? Okay, moving right along. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council authorizing Albany Parking Authority to enter its certain, enter into certain leases.
Thank you. Any discussion upon this resolution? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams? Anani?
Yes.
Ballerin?
Yes.
Clark? Conti?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Frederick? Hoy?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Kimbrough? Love?
Yes.
Robinson? And Zamer?
Yes.
Ten yeses.
Resolution passes. Uh, Ms. Zamer?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution sixty-four sixty-two twenty-five R and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council approving retroactive real property tax exemption for certain parcels owned by the congregation of Shalom.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams? Anani? Ballerin?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Clark? Conti?
Yes.
Farrell?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick? Hoy?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Kimbrough? Love?
Yes.
Robinson? And Zamer?
Yes.
Ten yeses.
Resolution passes. Uh, Ms. Farrell? For Ms. Frederick?
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Frederick, I notice resolution sixty-eight seventy-one twenty-five R and ask for its passage.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council approving a transfer to budgeted funds and a change in the authorized position including the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five city budget, which will affect the salary rate or salary total.
Discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, can the clerk please call the roll?
Adams? Anani? Ballerin?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Clark? Conti?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Farrell?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Frederick? Hoy?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
Johnson?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Kimbrough? Love?
Yes.
Robinson? Zamer?
Yes, co-sponsor please.
We have ten yeses.
Uh, resolution passes. Ms. Farrell, I think that's it.
The rest of the resolutions are held. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any miscellaneous or unfinished business? Uh, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, I just want to congratulate, you know, say thank you to the chief as he's walking out the door for coming to the meeting and just being a part of the meeting and not having anything to say. Um, but, but I also, no, and I always like to hear what you have to say. I'm always interested in your conversation. Um, I just want to speak to some of the people that came in and spoke about how they felt about the watermelon situation. You know, in certain parts of the city, um, the day looks different, you know, um, the quality of life, you know, it's a lot of things that some of the earlier speakers were touching on that, that is more pervasive in our communities than others. And when you have to learn to navigate through that and then you see, um, and, and, you know, not to say that is, is someone has a green light to do something that is against the city ordinance, but when you see certain things being enforced and other things not being enforced, that leads to people's frustrations. It makes people feel like everything is stacked up against them. So, you know, please try to hear people's passion about that because, you know, for a long time in, in my life, I can recall riding up Second Street and seeing that gentleman outside selling his greens and selling his vegetables. And when you see descendants, a person who is a part of that man's family, family, he, you know, they feel like they are legacy, you know, in certain situations, you are grandfathered in. And so when you have a, a member of a family that has been conducting themselves, you know, um, it, it was seen legally, you should understand people's frustration when, um, when they're encountered and told them they can't do something that they have been allowed to do for so long. So, um, I, I think that it, uh, leads to a bigger conversation about, um, um, something like this. And I hope that we can get it right for people who rely off farming and have historically been allowed to have sort of like a farmer's market within the city. So, I, um, just wanted to add some words to their frustrations because I can identify, um, and, you know, I felt the way when I looked on Facebook and I saw the police there and, and, um, and I, I just wanted to add that on the record to, you know, support the people that came down tonight to speak up about, um, an issue that, you know, we have seen for so long. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further miscellaneous? Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Those opposed? Can everyone else who's not a councilmember please exit to council chambers? Who birthday cake? Who birthday cake? Oh, you want? I will get a piece. Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Aye. Meeting adjourned.